We are recording.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's Monday, November twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. It's time for our regularly scheduled city council meeting. Clerk certify the meeting notice?
This meeting has been noticed in accordance with Idaho Code seven four dash two zero four.
Thank you, Clerk Colorado.
Councilmember Heller.
President.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Sure.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Right, next item is wedge of allegiance. Next item is changes to the agenda. Counsel, I want to move poll item three on the consent agenda. And we will deal with that issue on December. What's our meeting day in December?
December twelfth.
December twelfth.
Mister Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we pluck item E three from the consent agenda and set it for a date certain on a not on the consent agenda for December twelfth.
Second.
You've got a motion and a second? Any discussion on the motion? Are you not all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next item is the amended consent agenda.
Mister Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve the amended consent agenda.
Second. Thank you. Got a motion and a second? Any discussion on the motion? Are you not all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Item F is special business. These are the monthly staff reports, counsel. You have questions that you would like to address tonight? You can ask those. Now, I encourage you to visit with our department. That's.
Mister.
Yes.
I do have a few questions.
Okay.
Um, Ms. Thornford, if I may ask you some specifics. Um, my question is specifically regarding the ACHD priorities that we've scheduled. And one particularly that I did not see listed and therefore I assume it's not a priority, but I'd like to understand if it is going to be addressed. And that is the the traffic eastbound on Adams at Veterans Memorial Parkway. And there's been some discussion regarding a change in that traffic pattern. Is there an update there?
Um, Mayor, Councilmember Jorgensen. Um, certainly there can be. The the process for the five-year work plan is the ACHD reaches out to the city once a year. Um, not last year because they were revamping their their process, but yearly and asks for a list of prioritizations from the the city. And then that gets put into their process to prioritize for the entire county. And so there the projects that get prioritized with ACHD are not necessarily what the city has requested. But we can certainly make a request and make it a higher request, which weights the score and the prioritization um, to get a project such as that is a higher request. Um, it's anticipated that this will come before the council in February. And that's in time to get it to ACHD by their February deadline. Um, but the way that the city is set up, the Parks and Waterways Committee makes recommendations on matters um, within the right of way. And so they act as our transportation task force. And so they'll be making a recommendation in January to you. Um, and if that doesn't coincide with what you want to see, you can certainly amend that before it goes to ACHD.
Thank you. As a follow-up, Mister Mayor, I'd I'd ask a question of Chief Allen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Allen, um, I know that there was a study regarding parking and traffic at forty-second and forty-third in Adams. Is there an update on where that project is at and potential next steps?
Mister Mayor, Councilmember Jorgensen, we have not received an update from ACHD. Where we were at is the committee made recommendations. I think there's four or five recommendations that we made. We sent that the ACHD, they indicated that they would look at those, review those requests and get back with us. We have not heard back, but I'll be happy to reach out tomorrow and see if we can get some follow-up information and I'll be happy to forward that to you.
Perfect. Thank you. Mister Mayor, I have one final question of Mister Schmidt. Let's go down through what's. Mister Schmidt, I have two items actually for you. One is regarding, um, can you confirm, is the locker for the library working? Because I know that there was a VPN issue. Is that resolved or no?
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember Jorgensen, I believe it has been resolved. I think there was something on on our, um, the Orion side of it, on the the server side of it. I don't believe it was a VPN issue. I think it was a IP address issue, which I believe was corrected. And to my knowledge, it is working as advertised, but I wouldn't take my word for that. I would, I would talk to the library director and make sure that the that it is functioning. You may want to reach out to her by email or something, but to my knowledge, it is working.
Okay.
Yes.
Then my next question is regarding the nature path and the sinkholes.
Yeah.
And I understand we've got that fenced off. Well, I know it's fenced off. I walked it by it many, many times. But I I was wondering if you had, uh, what is the plan and what's involved with remedying the the situation currently?
At this point in time, we don't have a resolution for that problem. Um, there's been some internal discussions as to possible ways of fixing it. Each one of them becomes more and more complicated the more you talk about it, as most things do. But, uh, there there's another group of folks that are involved in that, and that's the New Dry Creek diversion folks. They're they're owners of that diversion. And I I don't really know the history behind it. It almost looks as if the nature path just took over the the top side of that diversion and started using it as a nature path. Now, whether or not it was ever intended for that purpose, I don't know that. So we, uh, we need to get in touch with the New Dry Creek diversion folks and see what we can do. We're gonna have to partner on this. And there probably a couple of different ways of dealing with it. Either, you know, the biggest one would be replace the diversion, which that that is a huge undertaking and and probably not not in the cards. Um, some of the others, we've tried backfilling that and it it withstood about two years of use before it started to slop off. Um, maybe some way of of bridging that gap with some other with steel or wood or something that would take some structural engineering to figure out the best way to do that. So there, I think it's going to be a long process. And I know I'm not answering your question quite the way you probably would like it answered, but, uh, there there are a lot of players involved in this. It's not just a city issue. So as soon as I have more information, I'd be more than more than happy to update you.
That's fine. I I appreciate the update.
Sure, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Great. Great. Any other questions?
Mister Mayor.
Yeah.
Um, question for Chief Allen. I apologize. I didn't grab you when you were there, but Councilmember Jorgensen was quick on the mic. In your, um, chief, in your staff report, page twenty-eight of the packet, um, item five sub A, there's a mention of use of force reviews internal. Um, and thankfully all within policy, so that's great. Um, the second part of that was of concern to me, several at the Revolution Concert House. My my question comes, um, i- is the business owner addressing this? Uh, is, uh, I mean, are they gonna hire additional security staff or event staff? What's what's going on? I I don't want to see anyone hurt and certainly not our police officers having to rein in rowdy concertgoers.
Mister Mayor, Councilmember Page, that's an excellent question. I picked up on that. We did, uh, we've been working on that with the Revolution Concert House and the promoter who runs that venue. Uh, the venue, the I guess the, there are more DJs dance parties, um, that we that are in question for those use forces came up. We did meet with them. Uh, we had the backing of Mayor Evans. Sorry, we had the backing of Mayor Evans and the city attorney, Mister Waddams, and I met with the promoter, Crescent Thornton. Uh, we, he has agreed not to host those events at the Revolution anymore. Uh, we have a really good working relationship with him right now, and they moved him out of our jurisdiction into another. Um, I would point out that I haven't even had a chance to talk to uh, Mister Waddams about this, but the next event that did happen, they had a major fight. And there were some injuries at that. So it's really sad that that's occurring, but they're not occurring in Garden City anymore.
Okay, so to summarize, I I and the first part of it, um, I didn't get, I wasn't able to hear very closely, but it sounds that like the problematic events have been moved to another location.
Mister Mayor and Councilmember Page, exactly. Uh, we met with the promoter. He's no longer gonna host those events in Garden City. And and it's unfortunate.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Council President Page, if I may, uh, Mayor, uh, we did meet with the promoter, and I think he's, uh, willing to do whatever the city needs him to do. He's he's agreed to pay the city more hourly for extra policing. He's agreed not to have dance parties. He basically said he does not want to fight with the city. And so I'm hoping there will be no further big problems.
And and Mister Waddams, um, clarification is is the promoter also, uh, the business owner? Or is that?
There's, uh, there's Crescent Thornton, there's CT touring, there's LLCs, there's all kinds of different things involved.
Yeah, okay.
But but, uh, the promoter is different than the business, than the building owner, the building owner is, um, maybe out of California.
Hey, thanks. Other questions? Great, thanks, Chief. We'll move now to, uh, section G. Uh, first item is a public hearing item. This is SUBFY twenty twenty-two dash zero 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 five. This is an application requesting a new construction of a town home subdivision off Coffee Street. Is there someone here representing the app application? One or more of you that want to speak, you're welcome to come up and present your application to the council. Now, while they're coming up, the way we'll conduct the hearing is, uh, the applicants will present the application. Uh, following their presentation, uh, city staff will uh, review the application, uh, from the city's perspective. Uh, following that, I'll open the public hearing and members of the public that wish to speak uh, regarding this application will have an opportunity to do so. Uh, at the conclusion of the public testimony, the applicant will have the last word. They you'll be invited back up to, uh, uh, for clarification, rebuttal, uh, following that, we'll close the public hearing. It'll go to the council for deliberation and action. Uh, so with that, uh, you would state your name and address for the record and, uh, happy to hear from you. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, council members. My name is Mark Russell. My address is nine six seven Park Center Boulevard, number two two seven Boise, Idaho eight three seven zero six. And I am the owner and development developer of this parcel and, um, very thankful for the opportunity to come before you today. Uh, this is a project that we have been working on for quite some time, for a little bit over a year and a half. And, uh, we have a really strong team, uh, here tonight. Uh, several representatives from Kimley Horn, uh, have worked with us extensively uh, and, uh, bringing forth you the project tonight that we hope that you all, uh, alike as much as we do. Um, here's, uh, some of the team that's with us. Um, and what we have tonight, we are, um, have the decisions regarding a planned unit development, uh, subdivision and, uh, design review. Um, and here's a little bit of the timeline that we have gone through today. We did, uh, have our first pre-app. Uh, we actually had a couple last year, but this is the first one that was centered around the concept that we have today, which is, uh, seventy-six townhomes. Uh, we had a follow-up one in June. We had the neighborhood meeting and, uh, also in June, submit our application in July. Uh, then we had a design review hearing. We did have planning and zoning in September. Uh, and they did recommend us for approval. We had a follow-up, uh, design review a couple of weeks ago, and we are here with you tonight. And I would like then to pass the torch, so to speak, to my colleague Nicolette Womack, who can walk you through some more of the details. And I am here for any questions, um, as we proceed. Thank you.
Councilmembers, Nicolette Womack, one one zero zero West Idaho Street, Suite two ten, Boise, Idaho eight three seven zero two. Um, so the site here tonight, um, is seven acres in size. Um, we are, um, near the intersection of Chindon and Glenwood Street. It's important to note that, um, in the immediate area, there are several acres of commercial and industrial, um, uses in the immediate vicinity. Previously on the site, um, it's important to note, um, where we've come from, where things are going. Prior to our client acquiring the site, um, it was home to several manufactured home, um, uh, buildings. You can see that on the site at that time, it was very internally oriented, that fence, I believe, remains to this day. Um, and had had very little interaction, uh, with the corridor at large. Um, also on the site, it's important to note that the bench, um, is behind it. Um, and about fifty-foot, fifty-foot grade change between our site and the bench homes above. Um, again, we have, um, on there, on our rear, uh, the Thurman Drain Canal, um, which has, um, significant existing landscaping, um, along that canal. There's a U-Haul rental facility across Coffee Street, um, to the east as well. Um, so the project includes seventy-six single-family, um, for sale, uh, townhome units. There are three bedrooms, um, units. That is ten point five nine dwelling units per acre. That is a lock coverage of about forty percent. Um, we did receive comments from ITD and they did limit, um, the access on Chindon Boulevard to ride-in, ride-out, uh, which is acceptable and was anticipated. Um, they did note that our, um, influence on, um, our traffic generated from the site on Coffee and Chindon Boulevard is less than two percent. And so they didn't, um, feel that it warranted a traffic signal at this time. Um, so again, on the site, uh, we meet the parking requirements, uh, required, uh, to provide a hundred and fifty-two, um, spaces. And we meet that. We also meet the guest parking spaces. I am shown on on this plan, um, is a variety of open space standards. So required ten percent. Um, if we evaluate the site based on the qualified open space provisions, we're at sixteen percent. And then if you actually evaluate the entire site, um, of open space standards that don't generally qualify, we're at thirty-one percent of the site. Um, it's important to know, I guess, going back for one minute, um, there is a requirement for us to build a ten-foot multi-use pathway along Chindon Boulevard. So again, previously on the site, um, there was limited street improvements, um, and a lack of regional connectivity. We're greatly improving that connectivity by providing that ten-foot wide multi-use path along all of Chindon. And then we're also providing that detached sidewalk on Coffee Street. So there'll be a lot of improvements here. There was discussion at previous hearings about putting landscaping within the area between the property line and Chindon Boulevard. Um, we had some preliminary discussions with ITD and they said they don't have a final street section designed for this part of Chindon. And so there they would not like landscaping in that area because they don't know how far, um, the future right-of-way, um, will take up. The landscaping on the west, the left side of, um, the ten-foot wide multi-use pathway will ensure that it remains, um, for here to come. Um, and, uh, helps shade those pedestrians using that multi-use path on Chindon. So the site, um, massing has been broken up into fourplex and sixplex buildings shown here. Uh, the, uh, fourplex buildings are shown here and they have a farmhouse style. Uh, the sixplex buildings are shown here, um, with a more modern style. And again, those modern roofs are designed to elevate, um, the the vertical height, um, of the structure. And then there are, there's a variety of color schemes, um, for these, um, projects. And so these are the standard packages. And we're, there was feedback about enhanced streetside elevations. Um, so the buildings noted here in yellow, one, seven, and fourteen. Those will feature, um, enhanced streetside elevation. So you can see that the buildings, um, the front door space the other side, but you still retain an attractive, um, front facade. Um, we wanted to give you guys a better idea of what this corridor is going to look like when it's all said and done. And so, um, this is a very long stretch of Chindon, so these get very tiny. We apologize. But, um, shown here, you can see that, uh, the fourplex and sixplex buildings break up the massing. Um, there's, uh, landscaping which further softens the front. Um, this is a very inviting streetscape, no fences. Um, and so you really do have the eyes on the street with a multi-use pathway in the front. And this one gets bigger because Coffee is a much shorter side. Um, but shown here, you can see again that, um, streetscaping um, greatly improves, uh, the facade with pedestrian amenities. Um, also, uh, unique to the site, um, all the parking is located in the rear, so it really has been buffered and screened from the street view. This is just the, um, access aisle of Coffee left. So we have, um, heard, uh, the designer views feedback about variety of housing. Um, we do want to note that we did go before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they felt that we satisfied that requirement. Um, and they recommended approval of that, um, three to one. Um, so we're providing fourplex and sixplex buildings. Um, we're printing a variety of square footages and floor plan types. Um, there is a difference on the site between, um, someone who might be interested in being closer to the Chindon corridor and someone who might be interested in the, uh, uh, location near the drain. There's also a lot of variety in townhouses between interior versus end units. So if you share one wall or you're on the end of the building, uh, that results in a lot of preferences. Um, there's also differences in front patio sizes and the facade treatments. So shown here are those floor plan types. And then here are images of the interior of the unit. So this is the Dumont style within the, uh, fourplexes. And this is the Dalton style within the sixplexes. And the Addison style within the sixplexes. There was a lot of discussion too about, um, tree preservation and canal pathway. So we are doing our best to retain as many trees on site. Um, it's a beautiful site, um, and especially along the Thurman Drain. All this area in green is, um, areas that we will not be disturbing. So it's important we bring to, to recall that we don't own the whole, um, strip of Thurman Drain. We only own pieces of it, and those other carved-out chunks are owned by adjacent property owners or people actually not yeah, living in the immediate area, uh, but they're, uh, landowners, uh, private landowners. And so we weren't able to design, um, a pathway that would be continuous along the whole Thurman Drain. But we did design the site plan so that there is a continuous network of internal sidewalks, um, so that you can go along Thurman Brain. Um, the multi-use pathway along Chindon will provide that regional connectivity, um, also with the Coffee Street improvements, uh, for the greater neighborhood. Um, regarding tree preservation, we won't be disturbing anything shown in green. Um, and we will continue to work with city staff on the tree mitigation requirements prior to construction permits. So we have heard the feedback of staff and, um, the, um, other hearing bodies. Uh, we added that Dumont unit type, um, with a smaller square footage. We improved the streetside elevations. We staggered buildings along Chindon. We updated the terminal island aisle views so that, um, they had building elevations at the end of the aisles and not, um, trash cans or parking. Um, we also increased screening of, um, guest parking, and we added that continuous pedestrian, um, connectivity along Thurman Drain. And so, um, we stand before you requesting approval of the planned unit development subdivision and designer re-permits. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that the, anyone else presenting? Okay. Uh, for for questions, uh, have you reviewed the conditions of approval?
Uh, Mayor, we have, and we agreed to all the conditions of approval.
Okay. Uh, council, are there questions? The applicant?
Mister Mayor.
Yes, sure.
Um, quick question. I looking at, we had this landscape plan, and then further in the packet, there was a different landscape plan. Is this the one that's for the record with the the trees?
Um, this is the landscape plan in black and white, uh, and then there's a rendering in color.
Okay, in the packet, there was one that was a little bit different, so I just wanted to.
The difference could be, um, there was a version, uh, where these, uh, interior units were on this side, and then it was flipped. And then there's different pedestrian.
And then my understanding was that potentially the trees were gonna be on the street side of the sidewalk versus in your plan to have them on the building side.
Um, council member, um, let me pull this one up. So right now, as the plans are drawn, um, our property line is, uh, right where the multi-use pathway is shown here. Um, and that's, so it goes multi-use pathway, landscaping on, um, the side adjacent to buildings. If we were to put it on the other side, as, um, staff asked us to, that with, um, ITD, ITD would be able to remove it, should they widen the corridor in the future.
I guess my understanding is they wanted them on the street side simply because people, it freaks people out walking right next to Chindon Boulevard on the sidewalk and having that buffer is nice. So, um, I guess from my perspective, it'd be better to have the trees on the street side, even though they may be removed. That's a who knows, right? But just from, uh, a safety issue or a pedestrian comfort level of having that buffer between, uh, between this, the development and and Chindon Boulevard. And then the other question I had was on the like, it's getting fixed, it's like, that's one of the questions I got. So on the tree mitigation, you didn't have anything going in. Is there any thought of just in the areas where you do have access to the Thurman Mill to put a bridge over it or something that just spans that landscaping type? Because you have a lot of trees that you need to mitigate. Looking at the the plan, the only place you're probably gonna be able to add trees is in the area that you want planning to really landscape. So I, uh, can you explain why you're not simply including that part in the development, really just making it park-like?
Yeah, um, council member, I just wanted to add one more thing on this. So, um, from the multi-use pathway to the edge of pavement on Chindon, there is an existing, um, landscaping area of of grass. So I just wanted to add that real quick. Um, but back to tree mitigation. So, um, the existing, um, habitat on Thurman Mill Drain, we are, we're wanting to keep cohesive, um, as is and, um, have minimal, um, impact on that area. Um, so even with planting, you know, we'd be, we'd be going into that space and and changing the environment a little bit. Um, also, several of the neighbors on the ridge behind us, um, they own pieces of that hillside going down, uh, and they have amenities of their own, um, in that area. And so they've expressed concerns with too much, um, foot traffic going in that area and being adjacent. Their, um, personal amenities, they have like a gazebo and other areas. So, um, that is part of, um, our consciousness on that, that edge of the corridor.
It just seems unusable, right? So you may, you don't want to change it, but no one can use that nice, because it's kind of flat and then it goes up. It it just seems it'd be a nice amenity to have either just a bridge over it, to use that, clean it up a little bit, just because it's you include it in your landscape, but it's not really usable landscape unless you want to fight through it, I guess, you know?
I'll also add the Coffee Street, um, area will be improved, um, so that will have a sidewalk that will span, um, that area of the drain. And then I also want to add on tree mitigation, um, we've talked with staff about the tree mitigation requirements, and sometimes on sites like this where, um, there's just so much significant caliber inch landscaping, very wide trees, um, there are, um, provisions and some other codes to, um, pay a fee and lose so that you can provide those trees in places where they're not so densely packed on our site that they don't do as well. Um, we would have to get that waiver before our construction permits. Um, so that's our plan at the moment. We're coming back.
Just just mitigate it through.
Be in lieu.
Give us enough trees to build a park.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, other questions? The applicant?
Mister Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Womack. I appreciate it. My concern is, um, maybe similar to Councilmember Jacobs, is this multi-use path, um, Just in, in my experience with this road and one other road in Garden City, we often have cars leave the road. And you know, the, the potential conflict, not only on the path, but to the structures is, is pretty significant. Talking about people, you know, living there and families living there. I understand that the fence that's there now is pretty dilapidated, but it's something that might slow a car down. And I understand from the testimony you provided that, you know, nobody wants to spend money to put landscaping in that might have to be removed if the streetscape changes in the future, which is a variable we can't control for. But has the applicant considered, like, you know, some boulders or something that could then be repurposed and moved if, if need be? A boulder is pretty good at stopping a car. It, it's just really a safety issue in, in my mind is my biggest concern.
And council member, we can check with Mark real quick on that. Again, we'd have to go before ITD to get their approval to put boulders in their own right away. So that could be a, a potential condition.
Mayor, Councilmember Paige and Jacobs, I, I would say that both of those were very open to that. I mean, in terms of the boulders or anything, the only issue we had was getting ITD. At least in my opinion, it didn't seem overly enthused about us putting stuff in there right away. So from our side of things, I fully resonate and, and understand and agree with or empathetic to that concern. And so we'd love to do something to mitigate that, as long as we get it through, as far as I'm concerned.
So, yeah. Sure, thank you.
Okay, other questions? The applicants?
Ms. George.
Yes.
I, I have a question. I'm not sure you'll be able to answer this, and if not, you can defer it to Ms. Thornborough. But in the ACHD report, and I would, for those that are interested, I'd point you to page four fifty-seven of the packet. And it is repeated as frequently as the ACHD report is repeated, is under item D. There's a statement that the applicant's proposal does not meet district policy and should not be approved as proposed. So, and it further goes on, the applicant should be required to improve Coffee Street. I mean, I won't read the whole detail. Did you read these comments and was there a remediation to resolve the non-compliance?
Um, council member, so we have had several meetings with ACHD staff. So the sightline has been updated to, to confirm all issues are resolved. So that should have been resolved at this point. Thank you.
Other questions of the applicant? Hey, here we none. Thank you. And again, after the public comments, you'll have another opportunity to, to close out. Ms. Thornborough.
Good evening again, Mayor and members of the council. And thank you to Ms. Womack and Mr. Russell for doing a thorough job at presenting their application. And I will go through some items. As already mentioned by the applicants, this is a subdivision application process as a planned unit development for seventy-six townhome units. And there is a split recommendation from the recommending bodies. And the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval on a three-one vote. And then the Design Review Committee did recommend denial of this application. However, with that being said, the applicant tonight has addressed some of those concerns in their presentation. The issues that the design review found are some are on page three of the staff report or page thirty-six of the packet. They were concerned about a variety of housing. Noting, the Design Review Committee did look specifically at the design components of a variety of housing. But as already noted, there has been an update for you tonight in the applicant's presentation, adding an additional floor plan. So now there are four floor plans provided with different square footage noted. In looking at the planned unit development, a purpose statement stated that the intent of this section is to provide for well-planned development, which conforms to the objectives of this title, but may deviate in certain respects from the zoning map and the district regulations. It is not the intent that the planned unit development process be used solely for the purpose of deviation from the dimensional standards in the district, unless the following objectives are also achieved. And then it lists those related to the housing. A variety of housing, the first objective is to provide a maximum choice of living environments by allowing a variety of housing and building types and permitting an increased density per acre and a reduction in lot dimensions, yard building setbacks and area requirements. And also within the planned unit development code, section C two D one requires when there's more than ten dwelling units that there be a variety of housing types. Code does include, state specifically townhouses, duplexes, detached units, single family, multifamily, et cetera. As plan units developments have been highly utilized for residential development over the last year and a half, two years or so. A variety of floor plans have been something that has been found to meet the needs of a variety of housing. We've seen that in situations where there may be two-bedroom units, for example, where the intent is kind of more of a roommate situation, where you may have two equal master bedrooms units or inclusive housing that may take into consideration ADA needs or aging populations, where there may be the master on the, the bottom floor, really looking towards how the, the person, the individual will, will be utilizing that. So I do want to bring up that the city has looked at different floor plans as meeting that variety of housing types. And not quite in the exact situation that's presented to you tonight. And also do want to note that since this, the city council packet went out, the applicant has noted tonight that they did add that additional unit type. Open space was another issue that the Design Review Committee was concerned about. Again, going back to that purpose statement and then objective number two, notes create a more useful pattern of open space and recreation areas. And if permitted as part of the project, more convenience in the location of accessory commercial uses, et cetera, which does not apply. They also noted natural features with the Thurman Mill. As, has definitely has been addressed by the applicant in their decisions and how they're intending on utilizing and integrating the Thurman Mill. But the design review, at the time of their review, did not find that it meant the objective to establish a development pattern which preserves the, the, the use or the amenities on site. One very important thing, the Design Review Committee was quite concerned about that access point onto Chindon. To no fault of the applicants, as the applicant gave timeline. They have kept staff apprised of their communication with ITD, but they were not able to get comments back from ITD until just right before the packet went out. And so the staff report and the draft potential document, a decision document, have not been updated to reflect that the applicant was able to receive approval from ITD for this current configuration. Subsequently, to the, to the reasons noted, a Design Review Committee did not find that the deviations from code allowed through the planned unit development process were warranted more so than a general achieved through conventional development or utilizing the base code. And one thing I might note, this is a townhome request in the C two zoning district. My punches, my speculation is that the applicant utilized the planned unit development tool in that it is the C two and zero lot lines would not be achievable without the use of the tool. Even though there are a few other waivers that are requested, including more than four units on a common drive. And the, there's the zero setback and then the parking. They're requesting a deviation from the parking requirements of ten by twenty dimensional requirements, not required numbers. So they're requesting a reduction from the ten by twenty requirement for the space size. The Design Review noted compatibility concerns with the neighborhood and that this application is located in the mixed-use commercial designation of the comprehensive plan. And they had noted to remedy their concerns and that a greater choice of living environments be required, a more useful pattern of open space and recreational areas, including utilization of the Thurman Mill. And so utilizing the Thurman Mill as an amenity, open space and housing choices. Because of the late receipt of the ITD comments in the draft decision document, number eighteen on page twenty-one or seventy-eight of the packet would need to be deleted. And should the city council uphold the design review recommendation? The findings related to I, lack of having the comments from ITD, which is finding number six under Garden City Code eight five B five would need to be stricken. The applicant has indicated.
Ms. Mayor.
Yes.
Jenna, could you give us those page numbers and sections?
Yes, absolutely. And so number eighteen is on page twenty-one of the staff report, which should be seventy-eight of the packet, page seventy-eight. And it should also be noted that there's a clerical error on number nineteen directly below that where it states State Street, which should say Chindon Boulevard. And then on page ten of the draft decision document, which is finding number six of the subdivision process, eight five B five. And I apologize, I don't have an exact packet number for that, but there is reference to, and it says without necessary comments from ITD regarding the traffic impact study, it's difficult to determine if the proposed ingress egress onto Chindon is adequate for the type of development proposed. So that would need to be stricken. If the council is to uphold the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation, either additional waivers would need to be added to address the deficiencies with code eight four B three, eight four I four, eight four I seven, eight five A six. Potentially. However, in the packet highlighted in yellow is our conditions of approval, potential conditions of approval to address those items. And we've heard here tonight that the applicant is okay with those conditions. The one thing that I would like to get into is some of the discussions that you've had with the applicant. Staff can confirm that it's staff's understanding that the applicant has worked through the issues identified in ACHD's comments. And then related to Chindon Boulevard, there is a, a condition, number three F, that does require that those trees are placed to buffer those, the multi-use path. And staff might suggest that perhaps that condition be slightly amended to allow for more time for staff to specifically reach out to ITD to see if there can be work in that, within that area, just as some history related to Chindon. I've worked on Chindon for quite some time and interacted with ITD related to Chindon. And right now, to remind the council, ITD was the principal applicant and Garden City was a co-applicant on a reconnecting communities pilot grant for Chindon. And within that grant, there's a request to look at trees to buffer the, the areas that are being utilized by pedestrians. And the reason for that, there was a twenty fifteen federal highways study that found that even where there are facilities provided, they're often not utilized on Chindon because of the, because pedestrians may just be too uncomfortable. Of course, there are a lot of caveats with that. The city cannot compel that the applicant have trees if ITD will not allow for those trees within the right of way. So that would certainly be a constraint. And I, I do know from my interactions with ITD and that there are some concerns that they have related to trees, roots getting, so the canopy and the roots getting into the actual asphalt, making sure, just as Councilmember or Council President Paige had brought up, that the, the pedestrians, bicyclists and homes would be vulnerable. The, the automobiles are also vulnerable. So ITD would require some sort of maybe extruded curbing or something around those trees to help defray any impact from an automobile. And, and so if that is desirable, ideally by the beginning of the year, the city might hear back if there may be something with that reconnecting communities grant to start working towards identifying a specific streetscape, but there may be something there where there could be an agreement. Or the applicant could work with staff with suitable plantings that still allow some sort of a buffer, but allow some site vision to the multi-use path and don't hinder clear vision triangles, et cetera, that may not be trees. Again, that's something that would need to be conditioned, worded well, so that if ITD were not, would not allow for those changes that it could be addressed. Think that that's all that I have on this, and I stand for questions.
Okay, questions of staff? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jenna.
Hey, with that, I will open the public hearing on SUBFY twenty twenty-two dash zero 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 five. Anyone signed up? No, nobody signed up. I don't know who's with us online. If there's anyone online that would like to testify, indicate by using their, raise your hand feature on the Zoom. Hey, let the record reflect that no one signed up to testify in person, and we had no indication of those interested, anyone interested in testifying remotely. Last chance, is there anyone that didn't sign up that wants to testify? Yes. If you would, join us at the podium and give us your name and address for the record.
Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Craig Colchak. I live at forty-eight thirty-nine Mountain View Drive. Just a few short. Mountain View Drive, just a few short feet away from. This development and the one question I have for the developer, are these to be? Home owned by units or they rent?
These are all designed to be individually.
Have you contacted any?
If you would, if you would, Mister Colchak, just refer the question.
Okay.
To the council and then we'll have the applicant.
Curious to to see that they're either renters or individually owned homes. The second thing is, has the developer talked to any of the landowners? That own the adjacent property on the south side of that canal, Kids Creek. And if they've had any response to those homeowners. That's all I got.
I'll ask those questions.
Thank you.
You're you're quite welcome. Anyone else? Okay, with that. The applicants can. We'll begin by answering Mister Colchak's two questions. I think in the testimony I heard, these were. Units that were going to be available for sale. Is that correct?
Mayor, that is correct, they are for sale.
Okay. And whether someone owner occupies or buys and rents is not under our control, but they are will be for sale and then. Was there any communication with those adjoining landowners on the south side of the canal?
Uh, Mayor, we did have our neighborhood meeting onsite before it got cold, so people did show up. And several of the people who showed up were the homeowners from the bench above, so we've had had communication.
Okay. Lord, yours to. Leave us any parting words or address anything that you've heard from Miss Thornborough.
Mayor, council members, thank you for your time tonight. And we know that projects have a long process through, you know, multiple reviews of different agencies. And multiple staff members and hearing bodies. And so we do our best to bring you, you know, high highest quality project, considering the constraints and opportunities of our sites. And so and. We appreciate working with Jenna and Hannah on this project and understanding the different sections of code. As we resolve different items, so again, this is a planned unit development and like Jenna mentioned. Deviations are required to have an attached project on within this zone. Without it, the conventional lot pattern mentioned in the development code is. Single family detached of divisions, which I think we all agree is not the vision of the Chindon corridor. The neighbors above, through that neighborhood meeting, one of the things we heard was how much they were. Excited that this was a two-story project and so we've been very considerate of height with their their concerns. The property again has always been residential and so we feel we are bringing more residents back into the city. Through this project and doing it in an attainable fashion for Garden City residents. Also, we would agree to the condition for trees on Chindon. We hope that maybe it could be worded so we can continue working with staff and I T D. On those exact conditions so that we can make sure we address those items you discussed. We are excited to hear that the grant is underway in the application and excited to hear about the study to come. Of course, we go through a long project review process and the client, our client has held the site for quite some time now. So we are anxious and excited to move forward, so we would hope that we could get. At least, you know, clear direction from you guys and anything we need to bring back to address. So otherwise, we did address the item about neighborhood meetings and I was thinking it'd be good if Mark shares a little bit more on the process of. The future builders he's talked with on the site and why this one, this plan made the most sense. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Nicole, Mayor, council members. We have talked with several potential builders as we as we work through this process over the past year to year and a half. I'm trying to find the the project that would be most applicable for the the broadest set of people. And there are several things that kind of led us to really solidify in this decision with the seventy six townhomes. Part of it is the site, the configuration and the Thurman drill, just Thurman mill drain led us to. You know, the locations where we put it, a couple of the other things that have developed over this past year that you are probably aware of. Which is one is the mortgage interest rate is going up so high. But at the time when we submitted this application. Or when we first had our first pre-application in March to today, the average mortgage rate is essentially double. And which means that the mortgage payment for someone on a four hundred and eighty five thousand dollar home now. Is what it would have been on a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar home in March. So part of what is really motivating us to do is to try to provide a high quality. Product that is below the median median house price, so we want to have something that is. That people can afford so that it would be a homeowner community. And and part of the construction cost to of a two-story is if you go up to three-story. The price per square foot goes up almost fifty percent, meaning instead of two hundred dollars per square foot, you have three hundred dollars per square foot. So there is a general concern about creating a product that essentially no one can actually afford. So that has been. I don't know if that's what you wanted me to address, okay, so that was just part of the conversations we've had that led us to. This site and these four plans and this layout.
Thank you, councilor, any final questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. With that, we'll close the public hearing. On S U B F Y twenty twenty two dash zero 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 five. Council, kind of as a precursor to the discussion. Deliberation you're about to have. We have a interesting circumstance where we have two recommending bodies that have. Are making. Different recommendations, one a denial, one an approval. And because of circumstances, I think you're all familiar with, I'm going to ask Mister Wadams. Again, to. Remind the council or help the council. Understand the differences between subjective and objective criteria. If you would, Mister Wadams, I know in one of the. In the design review, there's a number of references to purpose statements and. Criteria that. May be difficult to identify specifically in the code, so if you would, council. Council. Council, the council. S E L, the C I L.
Yes, Mister Mayor, I'd be happy to. I'd just like to remind the council that if there are no objective standards. That you can rely on to deny an application, that it needs to be an approval. I went back, we had a similar situation a couple of weeks back where there was two different recommendations from the recommending body. So I went back and looked at a case, a court case again, and it's. If there are no objective criteria to deny, it needs to be an approval, that's that's the analysis. I also went back and looked at that opinion again, and I think it's problematic to deny an application based on purpose statements. I think that it's not objective standards, or at least arguably is not objective standards. I also think it's. Problematic to deny an application solely based based solely on the common plan. So I think those are the parameters, the sidebar sideboards that the council has to work with. But again, if there are no objective standards to deny it, then it should be an approval. Thank you.
Okay, we've had. Any references? Any slides you want to see again during the deliberation? I'd like the one that's colored with the. Landscape, if you would. That one, yeah, yeah, that. This is a. Is it is a visual reference? So. The. In fact. To start off and. Miss Thornborough, if I misrepresent what you said, you know, feel free to correct me. But the conditions of approval that I asked the applicant's representative if. If they had reviewed, the answer was they had and they were. Agreeable with those and then. If I remember correctly, Miss Thornborough's testimony was that the. Conditions of approval addressed. A number of the issues that were brought up by the design review committee. And. So I think from there, I don't know if I'm missing anything, but. There are issues, counsel, that you need to. And debate among yourselves on this application, now's the time.
Sir Mayor.
Yes.
I may ask, Mister Bo, did I hear correctly that the applicant is willing to. Comply with conditions if I T D is flexible on those tree plantings. On the street side of the sidewalk?
Um, Mayor, council member Heller, that is what I understood from from the testimony.
And I and I see the. Nodding yes, is that right? Okay, that's my only question.
And and Mayor, to address that, there are, in addition to the waivers requested. There are deficiencies with code identified in. Three and depending on how you determine variety of housing. Five different additional sections of code and Mayor, you are correct. Staff did attempt. To address those in the highlighted conditions where they were already conditioned. For example, the tree mitigation was already conditioned.
And those are the ones that are highlighted, yeah, on pages sixty five and following?
Mayor, that is correct. The the applicant. May appreciate some direction based on their their. Or their proposal tonight. For example, there's a condition number twenty one to integrate Thurman Mill Canal as part of the site and utilize it as an amenity. If the council moves forward with the planning and zoning commissions recommendation. And the additional conditions of approval. Staff would recommend either stating tonight that that is deferred to staff. If there's not a remand back to design review or providing additional direction in that in that condition of. How the applicant could achieve that integration.
Question on that. The plan. Has the required. Percentage exceeds the required percentage of open space. And. The ownership, as you can see by the map. Parts of that stretch along the Thurman Mill are not under the control of the applicant. So I I. In any kind of an objective way, I'm not sure what standard they would not be complying with. If the design review committee. Didn't specify something specific, I'm not sure that. That I would encourage the council to get into design business. From the D S tonight. On a. On a project like this, it it I think your decision is is what we're looking at. With the conditions that Miss Thornborough has added. I comply with our. Code and did they deserve an approval or is there something about this that? That needs an additional condition or a change of a condition or there's some other factor, so. I just don't want to get in the design business up here because that's 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 out of our lane. Okay. Thank you. You might stand. Unless you like walking back and forth, you may you may wanna. In case another question comes up. We've heard council member Heller, anyone else, or council member Heller, if you have something else to say, you're certainly welcome.
I do not, Mayor, okay.
Mister Mayor.
Yes.
Respectfully take your advice, but I do have some questions because I wanted to use this as somewhat educational.
Sure.
For my own purposes moving forward and so. It the way that I called this out is there were concerns. The variety of housing and building types. One that called that. Attracts niche markets, open space, natural space and. Igress and regress from to and from Shinnon. So it sounds as if the open space and natural space has been resolved. I I. Think I heard that with the few changes that were presented tonight, we're getting closer to resolving concerns. About the variety. Now, my question is. The purpose of having a variety of. Buildings and types is in. According to the report here, and I want to make sure I cite this correctly. It, let's see, useful pattern, open space recreation, blah, blah, blah. Oh, sorry, I'm on page thirty seven of the packet. And if that helps at all, but.
People want to follow along.
Speaks to managing and creating a diverse housing market that attracts niche markets. What what does that mean?
Mayor, council member Jorgensen. I I guess I haven't been asked that we we haven't taken a formal interpretation, I haven't been asked that before. Or we haven't taken a formal interpretation on on that. I I certainly can state what I think that that means. I think that that probably means individual, not individual, but a variety of different markets.
As homeowners or the people that would be investing or purchasing these products, they would be niche markets?
And Mayor, council member Jorgensen, I. The way that staff has interpreted and as this this body has interpreted. That is that a variety of housing needs are being met.
All right. All right, next question is on the following page, on page thirty eight and. There is, let let me see if I can find this real quick, but there's a statement. Regarding to neighborhood compatibility concerns. And this one is, I do want to understand pretty well, the app. The application is not appropriate to the location or the neighborhood is proposed is less intensive than what is envisioned. By the mixed use commercial designation, so what's the disconnect and what's the concern?
And certainly Mayor and Councilmember Jorgensen, the the disconnect, I believe there is. That this is a strictly residential neighborhood where it's not commercial. There's no component of that mixed juice that's included and I can certainly. Pull up the comprehensive plans. Language related to mixed juice.
Miss Thornworth, I don't think we need to because we can't make a decision based on the comprehensive plan. Is there some place in code that we could point to and say this doesn't comply?
So the one Mayor, council member Jorgensen, the one thing that I might note is. Be required findings. So for required findings, eight five B five. So for required findings, eight-five B five, the required finding number one is the subdivision is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. And so that's certainly within code where your code is asking you to determine compliance with the comp plan. And I believe that if you go through all of the findings, I'll look, but you'll see that again in. Finding number seven for the plan unit development and finding number four for the conditional use permit required findings.
Can you point me, I may be looking at two different documents. Can you point me to a page number?
And so I apologize, I didn't bring my notes up with what the packet numbers are, but on the draft decision document.
Is that the color-coded one?
It's the color-coded.
That starts on page sixty-five in the packet.
So starting.
Sixty. Fifty-eight in the packet, but the color coding.
Yeah. Mr. Thornborough, if you, if you provide us with the page number on the decision, I can provide the packet number.
And thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council President Page. Page number six is where it would start. So actually, just go to page number seven, finding number one for subdivisions.
Okay, that's going to be page sixty-four in the, in the bigger, larger packet.
And then again on page fourteen. So that would be seventy-one by my count.
Yes.
And then again, two pages later, finding number four.
Thank you. I do, Mr. Mayor, have one other question that I'm hoping Ms. Thornborough or somebody could help me understand, and that is the compass report. Are you familiar with that?
I'm, Mayor, council member Jorgensen, I may need to refresh my memory, but I can do that very quickly and, but I'm happy to take a stab without knowing what your question might be.
On page in the packet, I apologize, I believe it's page four-eighty-four. My concern here is the report doesn't seem overly supportive of this development. And it's my understanding that Compass provides a lot of analysis and research not only on current conditions, but predicted traffic patterns, et cetera. And I mean, clearly, there's a lot of detail missing when you get just an X or green check mark. So that, but the thing that particularly I've find interesting is for this, the overall net fiscal impact by agency, it's a red check for the city. So can anybody explain what that means? Is it valuable information or not? The fact that the mayor just snickered is somewhat indicator, I think.
Yeah. Well-intended, but it deals with in, at some level with an analysis based on non-specific criteria to just Garden City, but general criteria. The revenue projection from a development versus the costs that the region will incur as a result of that. So it, it gets into everything from road maintenance, the police protection. Again, this is a non-specific tool that I think if you want to use it, you need to look at it regional basis. And anything that adds a car in an environment where people don't want cars, anything that's going to create potentially the addition of another lane of traffic when added to fifty other projects like it. The Community Planning Association says, gee, that infrastructure costs a lot of money. It, it's it's got an application, but drilling that down to a project-by-project analysis, we'd have that same comment on virtually pretty much any project we do in town, to be honest with you, in my opinion. The, I think some of the issues that, that are very interesting in, in this application. A niche market to me, in my experience, is a specific target market. And I think it's you can have multiple target markets in a project, or you can have more specific target markets based on whatever analysis you're doing. The applicant has stated that a price point for a family residence is something that was a consideration and a niche market. I'm not, don't want to put words in your mouth, but a niche market below the mean single-family home market that he was trying to achieve with this product, project. So and we don't have a definition to rely on, so we don't have an objective standard even applied to that. But, but that's, that's what it means to me. You have single-family developments that have minimum lot sizes and minimum square footages, and those are intended to hit a niche. We've got projects that have that Ms. Thornborough has expressed that have a multi-niche, which means some with bedroom down, some with bedrooms up, some with handicap access, some with, so there's a niche market there. So that one that one's a pretty subjective term. The, the issue in the comp plan that you referenced on intensity. Historically, we have never attempted to require any piece of property to be developed to its maximum intensity. There's a maximum impact that we want to protect, so we don't overdevelop a piece of property. You're getting a lot of personal opinion from the mayor, so the councilor may agree or may not agree with me tonight, and staff may or may not agree with some of this, but but, but we've never said, you know, in a zone that allows up to twenty units to an acre, that we aren't going to accept anything less than twenty units to the acre. That's a market-driven decision, and there's a range with a maximum. Yeah, we have minimum intense densities that we want to, or that we have ever tried to impose. So in my opinion, the a finding that a project could be more intense and therefore better may be valid, but it's an opinion. And I've already addressed the compass report and probably talking too much, but that's. That's how I'd address those, those things, yes.
It seems, it seems to me, you know, the variety you've tried to address with different floor plans, you added a different model. So I think I think if designer review party to look at this again, they can see that they added a different floor plan to come up with that variety. Now, you may argue that you want to change that floor plan a little bit more, kind of the generous point, have a master up or down or whatever. But I think the development does have a variety from that perspective. I do like the niche argument of having something that's affordable for the community is a good valid point to that. In terms of landscaping on the Thurman Mill, it'd be really cool if something was done there. You know, just as an amenity, I think if anything, it would really make your project that much better, and it would be something to consider. Again, it's something that we can't compel you to do, but it also probably helps with your tree mitigation if you plant a few trees there. It just, I think, would improve the project overall. Looking at that compass is based on safety, a lot of the red check marks are based on safety, and that was, I think, kind of what council member Page and I talked about it, just freaks people out to have the sidewalk right next to Tunnan Boulevard, and I imagine they probably give demerit for that. Hopefully, that is something that could be worked out with ITD on what they will allow and not allow that's acceptable to you all. I don't know if they put a boulder out, because boulders tend to stop cars really quickly. And probably create a hazardous for the driver, but it would be nice if they did something. But based on that, I, I think I just, we've talked about the slide, I'd like to move to approve. You know, make a motion to approve this. S U P F Y twenty-two oh five to approve this development.
Is it your intent to prove it on the basis of the findings, essentially the findings that are, that appear in green, plus the additional conditions that Ms. Thornborough indicated she added and that the applicant has reviewed?
Yes, because they've agreed to those. Yes, yes. I guess I move based on the conditions that are in the, in the packet and based on the the conditions of the approval, which may happen as a.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I, I would like a chance to be heard before we discuss them, the motion, or before we put the motion to a vote.
Okay, if we get a second, we can discuss it or.
I'll stick in the motion.
Okay, so we've got a motion in a second. Let's discuss it.
Mr. Mayor, we, we received a second on what?
On the, the second was a motion to Mr. Councilmember Jacobs' motion to approve with conditions, with conditions. With conditions that Ms. Thornborough articulated in addition to the findings that are in the packet beginning on page sixty-four.
So therefore, Mr. Mayor, President, Council, Page will now discuss his.
Yeah, we've got a motion in a second. Now it's time to discuss the motion. And, and we'll go from there. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and, and council members. You know, this is really something unfortunately that we've seen a few times just on the short time that, that many, many of our newer council members have been here. And it always presents a challenge to have a split decision. And this is a great example of, of a challenge. You know, there's some color coding. There, when asked the same question in each finding, two different bodies of intelligent people come up with different completely different findings. As I look at this globally, without, you know, pointing to particular findings. If I were to characterize, and I have characterized these findings in particular, the wording of every green highlighted comment points to some subjectivity, some measurability compared to the same finding in the teal color or whatever you're going to call that. I don't know, periwinkle. And, and the majority of those findings within the same finding category seem to be rather aspirational. They, they point to areas in our documents, city documents, that are more aspirational than subjective or objective rather. And so, you know, in, in this particular task, as it faces, as I, as I look at this now, I lean toward objective findings. We've heard testimony today that the applicant is is willing to embrace the recommended conditions. And in this, in this split decision, I would you know, I, I just, I want to say how I lean, and, and we can put it to a vote, but I, I lean toward approval on this.
You brought up some very interesting things, Council President Page, and I appreciate that. I on, on page sixty-five and finding number two, under the denial category, it does cite a number of specific code sections in general, and cites the entire code sections, eight-four B three, eight-four I four, eight-four I seven, eight-five A six. And I'm just giving you another point of reference. That's as general as the green for the, in my mind, for the following purpose. If you had a home that was under construction and it came to final inspection time and the inspector turned the inspection down because incited the uniform building code is the reason and left it at that. If I was going to critique this on the, on the part of the design review, there's no specificity. And what is it about eight-four B? What is it about? What are the, what are the specifics? And I think those are challenges that with our code revisions, we're trying to start to work through some of that because it's not, it's very difficult for Ms. Thornborough and her staff to try to navigate the meaning of niche or, or try to get into the heads.
Variety of housing.
Variety of housing.
Trouble with that.
And, and you know, another one on page seventy-one. And I see, no, page seventy. Let's see. There's reference to the purpose statement. I think it's on this one. Maybe it was page seventy-one. Anything we deal with about, that discusses compatible with the surrounding area. I don't know how we're going to define that. Much of the city is in an area of redevelopment. If it's different than the surrounding area, does that mean it's not compatible? Are we, are we trapped in the status quo because of a compatibility standard that is very difficult to define? So Because of a compatibility standard that is very difficult to define, so. I think there's there's some real some real caution there, so. I'm not don't want to be argumentative because I think you've brought up a great point, Council President Page. I just think that there. There is room for improvement on as we go through our code revisions on how we assist the staff. And. And coming up and distinguishing between. The objectivity and a standard and. What items perhaps we need to better define and. Part of our problem, I'm getting on my soapbox now, but part of our problem is the local land use planning act. Which is full of subjectivity as well, and that is a basis under the umbrella in which we're trying to apply our current code. A code that was successfully challenged in a previous action. But a code nonetheless that was based on the local land use planning. And I'll cite the specific of health, safety, welfare that is in the local land use planning and it is not defined. So. So we've got our we've got our challenges. So enough enough for me. Further discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
If if I may. What would I interpreted Council President Page? To be saying it it seems to me fits nicely with your remarks that. Or maybe the word objective wasn't used in your first observation. And I think you said.
Actually said subjective, which I think is actually the complete opposite. I meant to say I I don't have a, you know, dictionary in front of me, but I'm pretty sure that is the opposite word.
Well, I I wasn't going to presume. I that's what I thought you meant and so. I think that's that's consistent with my my observations, certainly in terms of the aspirational nature of. Some of the. Remarks in denial.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I think it would make sense to ensure that. Can we understand in or in agreement with what Ms. Thornborough referenced in some of the month required modifications and findings? Specifically, you know, I captured, I believe, item number six would need to be stricken. May potentially item twen- eighteen maybe needed to be stricken, so. Just for clarity, would it make sense to on the record ensure we're all in alignment on what those modified? Findings would be.
Certainly, if we're going to remove findings. Ms. Thornborough, would you come up and confirm that so we can if the council? Is favorable to this application, they can amend the motion to to ensure that you're able to produce the document. With those. Items that Councilmember Jorgensen.
Good catch. I intend to take some notes on this also, Ms. Thornborough. With what you toss.
Mayor, Council, President Page, thank you. Mayor, members of the council, the first item that is not. In the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation, should you go that route, would be on page eighteen of the draft decision document. See if I can do some quick math. So seventy five. Of the packet.
Which which page?
Seventy.
Seventy five.
Seventy five.
Three B and C sub I.
And Mayor Councilmember or Council President Page, that's correct. The next item. Is on the next page. And that's three. And that's the condition that was discussed about perhaps there it could be redrafted to allow some leniency.
Thank you.
And then on page seventy seven. Guessing. Twenty page twenty one of the draft decision documents. There's items sixteen through twenty one and staff has noted that number eighteen would not be appropriate. Anymore. And that there's a minor typo on nineteen where it says State Street, it should say Tindon Boulevard. And it should also be noted that the applicant's presentation tonight addressed some of these items such as nineteen addressing the street. Should the council determine that that is compliant? With eight four B three, which was one of the deficiencies. Noted broadly. Then I believe that is it.
That's what I see as well. Mr. Mayor, there is a motion on the floor. I am prepared to modify the motion if the existing motion is withdrawn.
Let's do a substitute motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to substitute. I move to approve S U B Y F Y twenty twenty two dash zero 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 five as conditioned. Excluding finding three sub B, C and C little I. Finding three F and items sixteen through twenty one. Including the findings of fact and conclusions of law, allowing flexibility for the applicant to work with staff and ITD as to landscaping options. Along the highway as the pending grant matures and to the extent possible to honor the natural features that are accessible within the applicant's ownership of the Thurman Drain.
Second. You've got a substitute motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the substitute motion? The substitute motion should pass. The original motion dies. Hearing no discussion per call roll.
Councilmember Heller.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Is everybody good to go on or do we need a few minutes?
Recession, please, Mr.
Okay. Let's call a short recess. Take care of some personal business and we'll reconvene. We'll reconvene the meeting at seven fifty two. Next item is item G two. This is a. This is a public hearing on resolution eleven thirty eight dash twenty two. This is a. Easement vacation. It's noted in the agenda. Is it anything you need to tell us about this, Mr. Schmidt?
Mayor, council members, it it was asked to be about a week ago whether or not Public Works had reviewed. The season request and since that time we have reviewed it and. Public Works and the city. Engineer. Have have no no issues with the vacation of the seasonings.
Okay, great. Thank you. Hey. Ms. Arbo, do you have anything to add to this? I can see you do so well.
I'm mayor. Thank you. And members of the council. And the easement vacation request. Does require a public hearing tonight. That's most importantly why I'm up here, but just as a little bit of a background. There's an approved subdivision application that in order to be buildable needs to do a lot line adjustment or a boundary line adjustment. And this easement vacation is requested is requested so that that can occur. The city has received relinquishments from all of the utilities and the homeowners association. Approval of this application would also result in the cities and relinquishment of the city's interest. In that easement, as Mr. Schmidt had indicated. Public Works finds no interest in development services sees no reason to maintain that. And with that, I stand for questions.
Any questions of staff? A hearing now. I'll open the public hearing on resolution eleven thirty eight dash twenty two. This is easement. F Y twenty twenty two dash zero zero one five. Is anyone signed up to testify? Is there anyone in the room that wants to testify that didn't sign up? Hey, let the record reflect that no one indicated an interest in the room and testifying anyone online that wants to testify regarding this item. If so, use the raise your hand. Tool on the Zoom app. They see none. The record reflect, there was no one. Interested in testifying on this hearing item. I'll close the public hearing. This point turn to the council for discussion and action.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I think this is pretty straightforward. And therefore I would move to approve resolution one one three eight dash twenty two.
Second, I had a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? We're now on the court call roll.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Heller.
Yes. Thank you. Next item, item G three. This is also a public hearing. This is a rezone request zoning F Y twenty twenty two dash zero 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 two. Mr. Fallon, yes, sir, if you would. Join us at the podium, give us your name and address for the record and. Let us know. Why you want to rezone it.
Sure, thank you. Hello, Mayor and council members. My name is Francis Fallon. I own and live at five two two East Fortieth Street with my wife and two daughters. I thank you very much for taking the opportunity to taking the time today to consider the rezoning of properties five twenty through five twenty six East Fortieth Street. From R three to a potentially better future use as a C two commercial designation. It is my sense that given Garden City's long term vision with via the comprehensive plan as well as. The very visible changes that are occurring directly next door to our home and along the green belt that now is a great time to reevaluate the zoning of this property. I live directly adjacent to the boardwalk development and also directly adjacent. To the green belt about two hundred fifty feet approximately of green belt frontage, river frontage there. I thank you for this opportunity and look forward to continuing to work with the city towards eventually further transforming this highly visible, much trafficked area. Into something that is both beautiful and useful. Thank you.
Great. Any questions, council? I I did have a a comment. That I wanted to. Pose to you. Mr. Fallon.
Sure.
If a C two zone allows quite a broad. Latitude in what potentially could be there and. It's my personal opinion that you have great intentions and there's an opportunity for you to do something that's very compatible with the area. However, should you. Sell it to somebody that might have a different vision. A tool that I'm going to recommend to the council should they approve of it to use this as in a in addition. And collateral to the rezone would be that it'd be rezoned with the development agreement and what that agreement would say. Essentially, it would create some. Some sideboards on what might occur there in the future so that. A potential commercial use, for example. It might be more industrial in nature, which is allowed in a C two zone. In this agreement would be prohibited, if that makes sense to you.
It does.
Okay, and. If the council is favorable tonight on your request. The procedure following a council. Public hearing. Would would be to adopt an ordinance that that perfects your rezone and that would be done over. Three separate readings at three separate meetings. So that means that push it in. Out until the I guess first meeting in February, I guess, for we would actually. Take the final action on it during that intervening time. I would instruct Mr. Waddams and Ms. Thornborough. To work with you on the parameters that we might suggest to the council that would be included in the development agreement. That's agreeable to you, sir.
It is agreeable. Thank you.
Okay. So with that said, are there any? Questions of Mr. Fallon from the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
This so I want to, first of all, I appreciate you being here today.
Thank you.
And I would like just some clarity on what your intentions are. For the development and future use of if this rezoning is.
Well, my intentions would be to do something that's directly in line with the comprehensive plan that's directly in line with what's happening next door and in the in the area. And certainly my intentions would be not to do anything that contradicts the city in any sort of way. I would like to work with with the city towards. Making it. Optimized and maximize for its potential and. As the mayor has just conveyed, I'm I would be willing to, you know, I'm assuming that, of course, perhaps the city, let's say, would not want to have a gas station there or some sort of factory and. I would be willing to to sign on to any sort of conditions like that. I think. I mean, the the only sort of uses I can imagine for the property currently would be something that's residential or or retail. Something that's 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 that carries it down the line of the green belt from the. The enormity of the of the boardwalk and then and then continues down to the end of the block at Fortieth Street.
Yeah, I believe there's a great opportunity there to capitalize on what is happening at the boardwalk development, so. Mr. Mayor, I sincerely appreciate your guidance. That's a very innovative way to approach this because one of my great fears. Is that something industrial would be developed there. And you know, something like a gas station and that that simply would not fit with. The direction of the development that you're seeing.
Any other questions of Mr. Fallon? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Again, we'll we'll adhere to the public hearing rules. We'll hear from Ms. Thornborough. Then anyone that wants to testify will have an opportunity and if you so desire, you'll have another. Chance to address anything that comes up. You you you're welcome.
Mayor and members of the council, thank you. Between the mayor's introduction and Mr. Fallon's presentation. I don't have much to add. I I do want to note that. Page six hundred and seventy five of the packet, page nine of the staff report identifies the changes to the uses. And staff is very happy to work with Mr. Fallon to identify uses that are less industrial in nature and more along the the. Residential retail. Perhaps restaurant type of uses and we can have that ready for the second reading. Staff has noted no concerns with spot zoning. This application must be in compliance with the comprehensive plan specifically also noted in Lupa. So this is a little bit different than in other situations where the comp plan is not a legally binding document. The comprehensive plan notes this property as mixed juice residential as well as a neighborhood destination node. And the findings that council must find to approve this application are found in eight six B ten zoning map amendment. Again, finding that it complies with the comprehensive plan, it complies with the regulations of the district. It's not materially detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare. And there are no adverse impacts to providing public services and it's also in the best interest of the city and complies with Idaho code fifty two two two. And there is a request for two actions tonight. There are two different agenda items. The first would be a decision on the application itself. And should council move to approve this application, then there would be the second, or excuse me, I'm trying to jump way ahead, the first reading of the ordinance. Please do note that the draft ordinance ten thirty five twenty two section number five notes that Idaho section fifty nine oh two requires that the ordinance be read three different days, twice by title and once and it's in one some full unless the majority there's a majority vote to dispense with those rules. And so if that does not occur, we'll need to take that back out of the of the ordinance. Without a stamp for any questions.
Any questions of Ms. Thornborough? Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing now on zoning F Y twenty twenty two dash zero 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 two. Is there anyone other than Mr. Fallon that has signed up to testify? Okay, thank you. Anyone online that wishes to testify regarding this application indicate by using the raise your hand tool in Zoom. We see none. I let the record reflect that no public testimony was offered on this application. Mr. Fallon, do you have any parting words?
I don't. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll close the public hearing. And council, the first action as Ms. Thornborough expressed was to make a decision on the application itself, which is the item we just had the public hearing on.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
You know, our comprehensive plan charges us to focus on the river and I can't think of a better way than improving the developments right along the edge of the river. We have a number of examples in our city where where that was not done and and we as we work toward redevelopment, I applaud the idea of providing the best and highest use for any property that is on the edge of the river. And with that, I would move to and adopt to adopt an already an ordinance aimed to perfect the proposed rezone of Z O N F Y twenty twenty two dash zero 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 two from R three to C two via a development agreement.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
For clarity, I noted that A C H D did make recommendations that there should be a requirement for lot consolidation.
They did. If we need to pick that up, it would be part of the development agreement.
Perfect. Thank you.
Do you recommend a modified motion?
President of the council, I would request that.
Would you like to make that?
Before we do that, I don't know all the specific circumstances around those four pieces of property and consolidating them. Could throw a monkey wrench in the in what might be planned, which the applicant has indicated he wasn't, he didn't have a final plan. He's looking for an opportunity through the rezone. So if you would, let us bet that a little bit. We can always add that through the three reading process. That's okay with everybody.
I could withdraw the motion to be more precise.
Well, we have a motion on the floor that second it did not include in a consolidation language. So that's the motion on the floor. If there's a if there's not a substitute motion, that's the motion we'll vote on, which is the motion council member Jacobs made.
Mr. Mayor, what you're saying is we can approve it and then just add to Reese's points in later reading.
If if the highway district made this recommendation, I'd like to have an opportunity for us to look at that internally before we recommend that particular to the council.
Good.
Not everything the highway district or any other commenting entity recommends maybe in the best interest of our applicant or best interest of what we're trying to achieve as a city. I don't know. I have no idea. Yeah, just have seen. Okay. Okay, so I've got a motion. Is there further discussion on the motion? Everybody understand the motion we're voting on?
Yes.
Okay, for caller, please.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, acting on the motion you just made would be to have the first reading of ordinance eleven thirty five dash twenty two, hopefully by title only.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion for the first reading of ordinance one one through five dash two two by title only.
Second. And a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing now the court call roll. Oh, I'm sorry. Never mind. Just read it. Oh, I've got it. Yeah, I've got a call.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
First reading ordinance one zero three five dash twenty two and ordinance by the city of Garden City, a municipal corporation, providing for rezone of certain real property described herein from R three medium density residential to C two neighborhood commercial classification, amending the zoning map of the city of Garden City to reflect said change, providing for severability, approving a summary of the ordinance, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda. Item G five. This is a public hearing item S U B F Y twenty twenty one dash zero zero one zero. Mr. Colcheck, if you want to make your way up to the podium, we have a kind of a unique circumstance here. Mr. Waddams, do you want to explain that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I think what you're going to hear from Mr. Colcheck here in a couple of minutes is he's going to request a continuance for this matter and he's going to explain why he thinks he needs a continuance and I'll let him do that. But the legal issue that's been brought up is under Lupa and what Lupa says on these requests for reconsideration, it says a written decision shall be provided to the applicant within sixty days of the receipt of the request for reconsideration. So we have a sixty day shot clock from the time that he asked for reconsideration. If he's granted a continuous, we're going to be running up on that sixty day shot clock. So my recommendation, if the council is willing to consider his request that we put on the record here that Mr. Colcheck is willing to waive that sixty day requirement and if the council is comfortable comfortable that the council also waive that sixty day requirement, then I think we can go beyond that sixty day requirement and not get sideways with Lupa.
Okay, with that, Mr. Colcheck?
Mr. Mayor, council members.
I noticed you're walking much better.
Way better. I'm doing about twenty five miles a week.
Okay, well.
So since
I'm glad you're you're doing better.
Since February, I've done a thousand miles. So it's not too bad. My name is Craig Colcheck. My address is forty eight thirty nine Mountain View Drive, Boise, Idaho. Yeah, like Charlie said, I'm requesting a continuance. The client that I have has not been able to secure an architect to complete the drawings that we needed to submit to design review. We've got the elevation drawings that are in that's in the package you've got, but we don't have the the pieces parts on the interior. And they're in the process right now of negotiating with Robin Gates. She did the flourish project for me on Forty Fifth Street. So if we could get a contingency on that, then we could submit the drawings that we need to have to design review and then we can move forward with this. And that's what I'm requesting.
Okay, and in conjunction with that, you're willing to stipulate to the extension of the sixty day deadline?
Yes.
For your reconsideration, have you heard?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Hey. So we're not going to hold a public hearing. We're going to deal with the with a continuance request council. So we've heard, do you have any questions for Mr. Colcheck on why? And just to be understood, without extending without him stipulating to the sixty day deadline extension, his project would end up being denied because of the lapse of time. So that's that's a benefit to an applicant to get a decision within sixty days. So he, by his declaration tonight, is saying I'm willing to extend that. Do we have a timeline that you want to shoot for?
I'm scared to go on the the architectural design as far as how long it's going to take. But we're looking at, we're coming into December already. And they haven't signed the contract with the architect yet. So I'm thinking maybe by the end of January and I'm going to need to be able to submit that to designer view for them to be able to look at it before we can have a hearing.
But you know, it's your decision. My recommendation would be to push it out to the first meeting in April.
Perfect.
I mean, otherwise you're running back for doing.
Yeah, I don't want to. I don't want to do this. You guys want to do this again? I don't want to do this.
Be last on the agenda.
And so, Mr. Mayor, just point a order before the council thinks about it. I think the standard on continuance requests is whether there's good cause for the continuance. That's the standard we use in most contexts. And so I think the issue is whether what he presented represents good cause for continuance. Thank you.
Okay. That's the standard council. So the decision is to to grant the extension contingent upon Mr. Colcheck's stipulation to the extension of the sixty day deadline and making a finding that the explanation that is he has to secure a contractor or is in that negotiation to perform the required elements of the packet.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Having heard testimony this evening from Mr. Colcheck that his client has been unable to secure an architect for this project to produce the drawings that would be required to go before design review, I find good cause to warrant an extension of S U B F Y twenty twenty one dash zero zero one zero and move to grant the extension under the condition of a written stipulation agreement that our legal department will prepare for the mayor's and your signatures.
Need to add the timeline.
Through April. What was it? April? I know it was April something.
April tenth.
As to a day certain of April tenth.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All roll.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Good night, gentlemen, ladies. Sorry, Charlie.
Good luck. That concludes the business on our agenda tonight. Counsel and entertain a month to adjourn.
I move we adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Hold favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We stand adjourned.